We will. Call to order the Bucksport Town Council Goals and Objectives Meeting for Thursday, February tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Roll call, Jake? I can't hear you, Jacob.
Sorry, Counselor Eastman?
Present.
Counselor Morrison?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bissonnet?
Here.
Mayor Stewart?
Here.
And Counselor Rankin?
Here.
All right, what we've done in the past on this, and I think everybody's familiar with this, is kind of look back what we did. Anything we want to change, continue, try to jump on again, anything new that's popped up, I think. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at Sue's update that she had on the Heart and Soul page there with the eighty-two items, there were some updates on that, and then her. Goals and objectives that we had worked on last year in her year-end report. I think everybody realized, there's been a lot of stuff done, there's still a lot of stuff to do. But I will open the floor and. Can kind of go around, or Sue, if you want to start it off, or?
I. I had provided the annual report, just so you could, because the first section of that was what our goals and objectives were last year, and it kind of gave you an idea of what on those we had addressed and what we hadn't. Recently, we had an infrastructure committee meeting which identified a number of items that. People are interested, or showed interest in, and I didn't know if you wanted. Things like the animal shelter to go on the golden, goals and objectives list for this year, or. Those kind of things that, you know, we had, we've talked about the need for increasing public transportation, is that a goal that we want to have?
Yeah, I think, I think a lot of those, and I think the best way to do it is, is those things we have talked about, so we don't lose them on the back burner, we keep them out in front of us, and it's something to. You know, check us every once in a while to make sure we are working towards those things that we've talked about, and again, things will pop up as they come, but. I think a lot of us are, most of us, everybody is in agreement on several of those things, you know, the, the. The public transportation piece, the, the, the animal shelter, and those type of things, so I think absolutely we should, we should put those on there. Mark?
Yeah, if I can, the only thing I'd add to the animal shelters is if there's a way to bring in a dog park together with that, so it would satisfy one of those goals within the heart and soul. Items for a dog park, that could be considered. When we look at it.
Okay. Did you hear that, Sue?
No, I did not.
Um, you mentioned maybe incorporating a dog park.
Okay. With the animal shelter piece?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Andy, did you have something?
What's that?
Did you, I, I didn't know if you were getting ready to say something or not?
Oh, no, not quite yet, I got a herniated disc in my neck, so I'm moving my arm a lot.
All right.
I want to talk.
Fair. Um, I, I don't know if you saw the latest email Sue sent out from one of the citizens talking about bike racks and, and things like that, I know. Is it this year, Sue, that there's some type of bike rally or something coming through town? Isn't there some big event with bikes and stuff and? And, and, you know, we're still in the semi-throws of wanting to get people outside and do those things, and I think, I really do think that that is high time to. Try to at least address that in some way, whether it's some bike racks on Main Street, or, you know, with, with the Great Mountain Trust, a great pond trust is, that has the. Um, updated trails out that they're working on, the, the mountain bike trails and stuff. It's a big thing, and then a lot of people are getting into that, so if we can make it a little more welcoming here, I think that's a good thing.
And if I remember correctly, didn't Rich say we have some bike racks not being used in storage?
I believe so, I, I believe there are some to be put out in some locations. And, and the other mention from Mr. St. Peter regarding EV chargers, we have those that we got the grant for that will be. Installed down by the town dock. When the connection is complete there to allow them to be installed, so that those two are also.
Yep.
Um, will be in, will be installed this year, and then we'll have three in town.
Mark?
Yeah, another thing I would add is, you know, we did, we had it on last year with the Masonic Building, you know, assuming that the park for public safety.
The Masonic Building, Sue, looking, looking into that again.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mark, I, I don't know, Mark, some, something's a little wanky with your audio.
Let me, I'll look at it.
Just to follow up there, and I, I'm probably not saying anything that isn't, wouldn't be on anybody's mind with that piece, but just, that just feels like one of those things that could be dropped on us fairly quickly. And then we would have an issue, and I know that we've been looking at that, and a lot of it is out of our control, I mean, if that, you know. We're, if we're not going to buy that piece of property, then there's little we can do to control it, especially when it sells, but if there is anything on that front that we can do. Because then, you know, we would have an issue in terms of where people could park, and I know that's sometimes used as sort of a, for lack of a better word, staging area too, so. Just, it is one of those things that should stay on the. At least the middle burner.
There was discussion at one point about. The potential for that building to be, to house the historical society, which would solve the need to put. A vapor barrier under the existing thing, provide them with storage on the upper floor for a lot of what they have, and. And then the parking would stay available for public safety, but that, that was one thing that was mentioned at one point. It's a potential option, and then the reuse of the building on Main Street for something that is. Commercial.
I think one of the things we've got to really be cautious of this year, and again, we, we talk about it every year, but is, is the tax rate, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at. Possibly throwing some, some money at new employees and new, new positions, and those, those do come at a cost, and. Maybe it's time to look at, and I know Sue and the department heads will, but, you know. We ask every year to just try to find those places where we can try to save some money, we are, we are growing, and, and I, and I know that everybody appreciates that, but. And I, and I, and I think everybody saw the, the paperwork that. Came out on the fire departments, you know, the number of personnel, the folks said, that was, that was pretty glaring, you know, and I, and I appreciate those guys, and. That, that was, that was an eye-opener, sort of, of how understaffed and that we are. But to that. We also have to be cognizant of. Where else can we look at, maybe we don't have to spend all the money, you know? Everybody comes with a need, you know, and, and we saw it last meeting where, you know, we're, 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 we're looking at, at doling out funds and, and limited funds that we have for, for what we all think are. Good projects and, and, and. Hopefully some value there. You know, the oversight on our part really needs to continue to make sure that we are getting that value on that. Keep asking the hard questions. And, and, you know, there, there's probably going to be some tough decisions made, and, and as we say every year, not everybody's going to be happy, and we, and we can't do that, you know, I, I'm, I am, I am happy that. We have kept our mill rate where it's at, you know, after all the. Last seven years where we came from and where we are today, so. I don't know if I want to make a promise that we keep the mill rate where we're at, it's going to be tough, I'm pretty sure, Sue's. I'll, I'll give you the, the floor on that one, Sue, what you think, but.
Um, well, the town has. Gone from a mill rate of seventeen-ten in two thousand fifteen sixteen to its current sixteen-twenty-five, and. And that is. Four or five dollars lower at a minimum than any other community that has full services, that's, that's just, you know, if you look at them, that's, that's what it is. It isn't reasonable to think that you can maintain a mill rate forever that never changes. Unless you have substantial additional new valuation every year that can cover the cost of the no, normal increases. Cost of living, price of goods, et cetera, the cost, our, our purchasing power is as diminished. As any other consumer in this inflated market, but the costs of what we buy have gone up significantly, but the. The things that we use them for from ambulance supplies right on down, that, that need hasn't changed, that's only grown. So, yeah, I don't have a magic wand, and, and I'm not going to advocate that you spend every last dime of your fund balance, and I'm not going to advocate that we raise the mill rate two dollars either, but. If there is an increase proposed this year. In my. The way I approach these, everything's a path, nothing's a cliff, we, we, we take steps, but we don't take steps that will overwhelm. People in terms of their budgeting or anything like that, but. Given the increase in regular costs. I, I'm not, and the, the fact that our valuation has not grown this past year. If we wanted to inflate values based on the crazy real estate market. We could generate more revenue without raising the mill rate, that feels dishonest to me, I don't feel these values are permanent, I think. That an adjustment in the mill rate that honestly reflects spending instead of trying to hide it by increasing everybody's house value is a more honest way. To tell people what the cost of everything we do is, but at the end of the day, if you vote that there's not going to be a mill rate increase, there'll just be cuts, there'll be no other way to do it, and. Because, as I said, there isn't a magic wand, we don't, we haven't taken on value that. In an increased amount, that's going to generate another million dollars in taxes. That hasn't, that has not occurred, but I, as always, am optimistic going into this, we, I think have done a good job. Thus far of balancing needs and wants and, and services that. Um, the town. Provides, so I, it's certainly not run around scream and shout time, you know, I think that. All the ideas of goals, I, I think it's a great idea to get them all on the table and then. See what the priorities are, and. You know, there's money out there that we're looking for, that they're still passing out like candy, that we can use for some of the projects that we want, so. I think that, that is another way to look at getting what we want without impacting our mill, so. Anyway, that's my two cents on the mill rate, probably not what anyone wanted to hear, but it's. I've tried to be honest with you folks.
Well, that's, that's fair, that's fair, you know, we've got. A big unknown down at the end of the road, that we still don't know what's going to happen there, that certainly could impact. I, I would think nothing more than positively if it, if it happens. But again, that's, that's that unknown that's been staring at us now for over three years, so I, I'm not going to bank on that one going in the bank until I actually, until it actually happens. Baseball field, I, I think that's, we need to get that fixed.
Is the floor still open, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I, I do have a couple of things, I, first, and probably last fall, several of you got sick of it coming out of my mouth, probably no, no, no more than the town manager. But I think you'll remember last fall, me talking, that one prior, priority I think we need to start to have as a council is, we know that Sue. Is planning on in the short-term future. She's not going to be our town manager forever, at some point she's going to retire, and I think we're in a very fortunate position that we have that, that, that knowledge ahead of time. And I think it's important that we begin looking at the priorities that this council will have towards replacing her. And what that will entail in terms of, you know, will we be able to find somebody like Sue who can serve as both our town manager and finance director? Find that unlikely, but it could, you know. But how do we even want to handle that, and then as we move forward, just, you know, also taking a look at what that's going to cost. And, and moving from there, and where it's not next year, I hope. Or even the year after, it seems like we have plenty of time to start prioritizing around that, because it could potentially be something that we need to account for in mill rate discussions. Other things along the mill, you know, with the mill rate, I mean, the trash situation continues to be interesting. And I think perhaps it's time that we prioritize how we want to handle that as we move forward, even despite the fact that our options are limited, I did see in the paper this week that. Around recycling, there are increased options, but they don't come cheap, so how does the council want to go forward there? And I promise I don't plan on talking for a long time.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, with the new web, no, no, don't encourage that, with the new website, as we move forward with that, I think one thing that I would like to see is that used to its fullest potential. I'm finally trying to get away from something that, that's going to cost money or more money, but in terms of, like, for example, once we put together this list of goals, having that, that should be something that is easily added. To, to our website, another thing would be, we have a schedule for planned road work, let's make, and I'm not saying these things don't exist, but I mean, just making them as accessible as possible. With the new website, it's just things that I'm thinking about along the lines of marketing, et cetera. Last but not least, and it's work that's already begun, but I, I want to throw my support behind it, is taking an inventory of the abandoned properties here in Bucksport. I commend the, the code enforcement officer and everyone else that's behind that for taking that step, because there, there's a number of them that, before they get much worse, could be. If there's stock taken of them, could be rehabilitated, so we don't have some of the issues we've had in the last couple of years. And then I, we talked about this last time, that's two things to talk about in budget season, I think the fire EMT numbers, to, to steal your verbiage, Mr. Mayor, were shocking. And I think this afternoon honestly is a great case in point, if you're not aware, there was a child. Hit by a car with minor injuries up by one of the schools, and then right after that, the town was asked to give support to the, the major fire in, in Bar Harbor. I can guarantee you that the fire department this afternoon was stretched then, and it was, or already was stretched, that we need to decide if it's. Effective to have, to not have the staffing to, to. Provide the support that we could be providing on that front, and then the animal shelter too, if we're going to be in that business, if we're going to maintain an animal shelter, we need, in my mind, we need to be doing it right. We need to have a, a fully functioning animal shelter that actually has a bathroom facility that can serve the number of animals that we're seeing, and even go so far as. I, I think Counselor Eastman's suggestion is at least worth, worthy of consideration around the dog park, depending on what our options are as we move forward with that, I'll stop there.
Thanks, and I echo your sentiment also on the abandoned buildings, that's been a pet peeve of mine for a while, and I do appreciate, like you said, the CEO going after that, but I. I would agree that. That's next, one of the next steps that we got to make sure to, to keep this place going forward, because you hate to drive in on, on our main road and see places that look like they're ready to fall down, does not, does not give a good look. Thank you. Ed?
Yeah, I, I had a few things on my list, animal shelter, I know it's been brought up, but I'm definitely in support of. Pursuing that this year, and with Mark's idea of the dog park, I think it would work. Maybe even looking at moving it from its current locations, maybe a better location with town garage, or, I don't know. I think it'd be a really good discussion this year. Waterfront and the walkway, I know we're already looking into that. But. Before we lose what we've got, I think that we need to get on top of that this year. As far as what we're going to do with the walkway and the erosion and everything, basically. Sue's replacement, that was another one, Paul brought up a good point, whether we, in my mind, are we going to. If there's people in-house, I think. That would be a great scenario, that we'd have a long time that they could work with Sue. I think that's, that's up for a really good discussion this year as well, so we can pursue that. I also wanted to have a discussion this year, what the council feels about like term limits for council members. Whether it be two, three, four. And before the headline says Counsel Rankin's trying to clean house. It's, it would be, in my mind, not retroactive, so if we. If we brought that into effect. Peter, you've got the most tenure, but it wouldn't matter, you'd have your three or four terms after that, just so I make that clear that. I'm not pushing an agenda, so.
I appreciate that, Ed, but I don't think you're worried about three or four more terms, I'm just going to let you know that right up front.
Yeah, that was it, thank you.
One other thing I wanted to bring up, Peter, if you guys can hear me, is some kind of master plan for the sidewalks in town, because. We have a lot of deteriorating sidewalks, and it would be good to at least have a plan, even if we don't follow through on it this year. Where do we stand, Sue, on the, and I know you had a piece in there, but if you just maybe expound on a little bit on the. Redevelopment of the town dock?
The redevelopment of the town dock, Rich is applying for an EDA grant that, to cover the. Well, we're asking for all of it, the cost of that project, the engineering's done, the application I think is due in February, and. That is the current funding. Method we're going with, because the, to the best of my knowledge, the whole trachem issue is still. Not resolved, and the committee that would have to then, once it's approved, then determine. What to do next, whether they need more studies or whatever, is a, is a years-down-the-road kind of process that really is. Out of line with what we're trying to accomplish and getting that done in the short term, so this EDA funding that Rich has met with. Our congressional representatives about is the path that we're going right now.
Okay. I, I, I assume all of you have heard or at least caught wind of a possible development over in Prospect. With some granite mining and stuff like that, if you haven't, we may, we may get asked to. For our opinion on that, to be in, to, to, to render what we think is the decision. If you haven't looked at it, just, I would ask folks to just take a chance to kind of maybe read up on what's going on over there, and it may, it may show up over here just as a. Support, no support, you know, opinion, whatever the case may be, you may get a call also as a counselor, just on, 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 on a opinion. Please make sure that you're, you're speaking as yourself and not as the council, though, sometimes that can get misconstrued, that. As Ed would say, he's going to get hammered in the paper for trying to clean house or something, so. But that, those, those type of discussions, just the whole regional type thing may start coming more into play. Especially around the river area and stuff like that, with the whole trachem thing, the Prospect thing. Our development, you know, people may not be all for our development on the waterfront, so we said, well, those discussions will probably be coming up sooner than later.
The Prospect Development Application was returned as incomplete by the DEP. I, I mean, I'm sure they'll resubmit, but. Needed additional information.
Speaking of applications and process, I know Whole Ocean said they were going to make an announcement at some point, have you heard anything more from them, Sue, what?
I have not, they said in the first quarter, so I, you know, we're in February, this one more month and a quarter, hopefully we hear sooner rather than later. We had talked about a neighbors helping neighbors program, sending out, looking for volunteers, is that. That will, you know, take time and effort, but is that okay to put on our goals list for this year to get that going?
Yeah, I think that was pretty unanimous on a, on an idea that everybody was looking forward to getting off the ground. I know we had talked about a community get-together, maybe up to the school or on the waterfront. I still think we ought to try to pursue that.
For the volunteer fair type deal?
Yes.
Yep. Have we heard from Mr. Boothby at all about what he's looking at? As far as his budget?
No, I haven't, the only reference he made to it was in a meeting that. We would have to have a discussion, but he didn't say if it's a good discussion or a bad discussion, but.
Yep. And again, that one, you know. Sort of out of our hands, I mean, it is, it is the public's hands, but that one sort of added on to ours, and we, we, we work with it, so.
The ARPA money may impact any or some of these, but ARPA is, you should be planning on what to do with that this year if it needs to be expended by twenty-four?
Yep. Park Street, Sue, so we, we, we now own that, for lack of a better way of putting it. What do we know, if anything, about the development that's going to happen on that street, anything?
Well, right now, part of the lots, or part of the act, what's been accessed is, is commercial, according to our zoning, and part of it's residential. The. There was discussion that there was a buyer for the whole development. At one point, I have not heard an update on that, but. Now that the road is, has been accepted by the town, you know, Loop could issue building permits on. On that, and. He, to the best, he has, he's not received any at this time, but that would be the location, but it's commercial, part way beyond the family dollar, you know, up the hill a bit, and then. It's residential beyond that.
Anything else, folks?
Sue, when, when would Park Street be accessible?
Just as soon as we can move the barriers and clean it up, it's the sort of the, it was. It was blocked off and accumulated quite a. Foundation of ice, I know that. I had reached out afterwards and asked them to remove the barriers so that Jay and the crew could work on. Getting it cleaned up, would still keep it coned off until it's accessible, but. That was right before the blizzard, that's where we were heading, and then it's not stopped since, so. Right before the blizzard, that's where we were heading and then it's not stopped since, so. But if it can stop snowing and icing, we'll be fixing that. But initially, we were just waiting for Woodwell to move his barriers. So that we could access it and then close it off without damaging those which are theirs, not ours.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
Uh, one more question, Peter.
Yep.
Do we have a a bill or anything for that? That we need to incorporate in this year's budget for Park Street?
A what?
Payment or anything like that?
No, 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 they they're the the final payment and sidewalk, all that is their.
Okay.
Responsibility, that was part of that resolve, that they have to do the final code of payment and raise those manholes and. Do that stuff.
Okay.
So so the sidewalk is finished now?
No, it isn't, it isn't complete yet, no, that has to be completed be. It has to be completed by, I think, November of twenty-two was the date that everything on it has to be done, but it's done by. Um Woodwell, not by the town.
Thank you.
Like a lot of other things, things are going to pop up all year long, um we'll play crisis management when we have to, we'll make decisions when we have to and. Some things we may have to still think about, so. Um, like we've always said, though, I think we've so far done a pretty good job of of keeping going forward and. I think doing what's in the best interest of most, if not all, the folks here, um. I will say, I talked to Sue yesterday and um my plan is to have our next meeting in person, just so we can. A lot of, a lot of the restrictions are getting lifted, a lot of the. Numbers are pointing in the right direction, so. I uh I'd like to get back together and. Again. Short of, short of something going south here in two weeks, um if Kathy can go down to Augusta and be in person, I guess we can be in person, so.
Mayor Stewart, the code enforcement officer just advised that those sidewalks are now finished. So he just.
Park Street?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go, Jim.
Thank you.
I think that the one I was talking about is the one that goes up from uh. That's going to be completed, goes up from Route One up to meet the new sidewalk that's at the new. Thing, because that sidewalk was supposed to be a part of that original Park Street development, I I'm sorry, I. The ones up inside that they just built, but we're still missing the end piece, so.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, I'll give everybody back twenty minutes or so, um we'll come back, if you want. Sue, do you mind texting Danny and just let him know that we'll uh he can go to the services committee invitation?
We'll do that, yeah, that's at six fifty for um Rich and his request, so.
We'll see if Jacob's got another call for us there.
We had a uh resident email requesting that um cemeteries be added as a budget. In that, and when I say cemeteries, I don't, we already give a little, but a cemetery budget that accommodates. The kind of work we're going to be talking about later on the agenda, which is a a plan for restoring stones. And our cemeteries that are damaged that haven't been done, so that that's a request. Um and the cemetery committee has discussed that as a as a prob- priority for this year as well. In order to. Use what we're doing um or proposing to do in molten and oak in other cemeteries that are. Where the stones are in bad shape.
Very good. And I would close, I've just closed, you know, it it can be a goal, but we do it every day, is just continue to be an open, welcoming community. Take all viewpoints, um listen to all sides, um and 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 make good informed decisions and 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 let. You know, a couple of these things that came in, uh Sue and I talked about, we 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 don't ever turn anybody away for having an idea. Um I do, I do like that about this council and the way that we operate here is no idea we won't listen to. And we will do what we have to do to to make a hopefully an informed decision on all of those, so. I I would, I would want to continue to to keep going in that direction, and I know we will, so. All right, so uh six fifty, we'll come back, there's, I think there's, you got an invitation for that, Sue, then an invitation also for the.
Then you've got invitations for the next two, the one at six fifty and then the one at seven.
Very good, thank you.
See you in a little bit.